All right, good evening, everyone. Let's rise for the pleasurable allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barbara, if you will, please call roll.
Sidney Charney?
Here.
Joe Shaw?
Yeah.
Chuck Lewis?
Yeah.
Charlie Fisher?
Here.
Greg Trader?
Here.
Alex? Whoever you guess. Myself, Art Kelly. And we have a special guest, Brian Seidel from Upper Chichester Township, County.
As well as the solicitor.
I'm sorry. Yes, very sorry. And Mike Pierce is on virtual, and he's present, too.
Welcome, Mike.
Hi, guys.
All right, do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, Joe's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, they're approved. All right, do we have somebody online who might be representing 820 Columbia Avenue Project? If you are, please state your name, your title, and introduce any other team members you may have with you. We have a little technical difficulties here with our guests, so we'll give it a couple of minutes. The good news, the Phillies can't lose tonight, right? That's right, Joe. I'll tell you what, let's give it a couple more minutes, and if we're still having some difficulties, that will move to the second item on the agenda, and I think after that, if they come on line, I think we could probably break away from that, because I think we can continue that conversation. Wait about another minute or two, though.
Are you part of the development team? Can you?
Star six.
Can you unmute yourself?
It looks like I'm in by phone.
Charlie, I'm sorry that you're in by phone only so far, but if you will, is there anyone else there with you?
No, I can see your video, I see you on video, but I can't seem to connect.
I think we have, I think we have, each of us have copies of the exhibits that you might be referring to.
That's right.
If you need to, so why don't you, why don't you make your presentation? I have, Alcard Rieke is here, is our engineer, and I'll have him address some of your comments after you introduce yourself and explain your project.
Yes, my name's Charlie, I'm a land surveyor with Stantec, and if you don't know Stantec, you may know Volmer, and if you don't know Volmer, you probably know Brandywine Valley Engineers, that's our history in a nutshell. The project is, of course, straddles the township line in upper and lower Chichester Township, it's got an address of 820 Columbia Avenue, and you know it as TNT fireworks, TNT fireworks, which is to retain the eastern portion of the lot, we'll call that lot B1, and that will be 6.54, 554 acres, and they're looking to partition the land and sell off the western portion, which would be 8.644 acres. There are some wetlands on that western portion of the property, the wetlands are almost entirely in upper Chichester Township, with a portion in lower Chichester Township. We received a comment letter from Catania Engineering on March 12th, I believe you have a copy of that. I can go through those items at this time, are you hearing me all right?
I think we're hearing you fine. After each one of the comments, if you will, I'd like to have Alex make mention if he's okay with that, or if he wants to have further discussion with respect to it, okay?
Okay, yeah, Alex, thanks for your letter. Number one is in regard with the wetlands, and our client has already agreed to have the wetlands reevaluated and redelineated. Right now, we don't know if they're going to be in the same place, or if they're going to be reduced. Of course, they would love to see them reduced, but we are in the process of getting that redelineation done at this time. I can't, I can't give you a schedule as to when it's going to get done, but I think it's pretty soon.
Is this, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to number two. A recreation and open space has been, or a fee in lieu has been requested, and our response to, my client's response to that thus far is, most of the land on the lot in upper Chichester Township is more than likely going to be wetlands and not developed, so it will be open space, and they may be looking for some relief on that item.
They would have to request a waiver if they're looking for relief.
If they request a waiver, I guess what's the procedure after that?
You would come before the board, we would, we would basically consider your request, and if everyone in the board felt, the majority felt that that was what should be happening, we would be recommending that to, to the Board of Commissioners, but the final word on the relief itself is actually with the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I will advise my client of the same. Number three, we had some problems with the area tabulation on note number five, that note number five was an artifact from a prior configuration, there is no, there is no right of way to be dedicated on this plan. Columbia Avenue is a dedicated road, 90 feet wide, and Blue Ball Avenue is dedicated along the, well, your only concern would probably be with Blue Ball, but that's a dedicated state road, and I apologize for the error on the plan.
Do you have documentation from PennDOT's right-of-way plans that shows that they accepted that Blue Ball?
We'll probably have to find that. I do not have it at this time.
You'll, you'll send us a proof of documentation for that from PennDOT's right-of-way unit?
Yes. All right, then we'll move on to number, and that's number three and number four, we're kind of joined together like that with respect to that issue. Number five, the existing bottom and banks and top of banks for the stormwater basin, that, that is, if you, if you have the opportunity to zoom in on that, tension basin, stormwater basin, that would be at the west side of the driveway going into the TNT fireworks site, there is a stormwater basin there. We've labeled the bottom of basin and top of basin, and actually, I think that was a function of the easement to maintain a 10-foot minimum around the top, make sure we have a 10-foot minimum at the top of the basin for maintenance purposes, and that's shown on the plat at this time.
Is this plan showing a revised easement, you're saying?
We did not revise the easement, I showed the bottom and top of basin, and we're showing a 10-foot clearance from the top of the basin to the easement. That is, I'm looking at the basin in lower Chichester Township. The basin, are you going to require an easement on the upper basin up by I-95?
Well, from upper Chi's perspective, as long as that's already on the lot that it's serving, the only easement that we might consider is, is the standard operation of maintenance easement, which is a more current concept that's been put through the stormwater management ordinance, but the easement for the lower basin, which is also serving the fireworks business, since that's on the other property, they, they will need to have easement fully around that basin for their own access for maintenance on that. I think your easement, if you look closer on your easement, the way you have it, I think you're cutting off the berm along the spillway there.
I'm sorry, the berm along where?
There's a, it looks like a spillway based on the contours of that basin that's on the left side of the driveway.
Yeah, that's a seepage basin, and there is a spillway on the, that would be on the northwest side.
Right, so I think, I think the fireworks should have a complete easement for doing any earthwork improvements if necessary around the, around the entire basin, since it's going to be no longer in that property.
I don't know if it's possible to zoom in on your display there, on the proposed drain easement. Yeah.
Are you able to see the screen, too? Because I mean, this contour line, half the line, looks like that's a works and spillway from this basin that would come back from there. So there, I would think that the fireworks should have their easement going fully around the bottom and top of that basin, so if they need to do any improvements or repairs, the bank there.
I don't know if he could see you doing that, Alex.
Well, it would be around that 102 contour line.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know they're picking you up doing that, Barbara, because you have to be doing that on the computer.
And we can, we can.
There you go, see that right there? He's got the pointer, see the pointer, that's what you're talking about.
Pointer.
Right, that 102 contour wraps around that basin as, to me, as if it's a spillway there, and that would be like a bottom of bank to that berm there.
I've got the bottom of basin is labeled above the word proposed.
On the inside.
Bottom of basin is down around 98, and yes.
Bottom on the inside, too.
The top's around 102.
That's, that's on the upper side, and then there's another, there should be like another lower bottom to that basin, because it goes back down towards 100. So it might be like a 101, or 1.5, there's got to be a lower side again to that basin.
Yeah, that's, I've got a couple labels on the bottom of basin.
Yeah, but you're, I'm talking not on the inside of the basin, on the, on the outside of the basin.
On the outs, well, okay, on the outside? Okay, so you're looking for 10 feet beyond the bottom on the outside.
But keep in mind, that, this is going to be, this basin is basically serving the function for the fireworks property.
Right.
So they're going to need full access to, for any permanent maintenance repairs on that, so they need to get it from the bottom outside toe of that basin to the inside. Their rights to repair that if necessary.
Do we, do we have the delineation line between upper Chi and lower Chi there? It's running right through the basin?
No, it's right along the angle.
Okay.
No, that's the southern line. So. The horizontal line.
I think that's the property.
All right, so that's all on lower Chi, right?
Yes.
So, so that's a lower Chi issue.
Well, but it's, it's a basin for the fireworks.
Okay, I understand.
But whether, regardless of the township line, it's going to be on lot two then.
Yes.
So the fireworks need to get access to that, in the future, they may need access to their own basin on lot two, regardless of who's handling it.
Gotcha, all right. So therefore, the easement.
Or an obstruction easement.
Okay.
So could we, are we going to put in an additional easement? I, I guess what we need to do, and you tell me, would be to expand this, I'm calling it a drainage easement, but would I need an additional maintenance easement, or if we expanded that, we could call that a drainage and maintenance easement together, or are we looking for two easements?
I don't know, one easement's fine, as long as you get the entire basin from the top of it to bottom of bank on the inside and the outside, with an access point, going to either driveway, driveway as an access point.
All right, I'll have to look into that on, on this end, and I, we'll see how we're going to show that on the plan. The thing about that, yeah, it's pretty subtle, I mean, it, it's not, it's not built up as a hill around there, it just kind of flows into a low spot, and then that spillway kind of leads off to the northwest, so I'm, I'll look into see how we can delineate that bottom of bank outside the basin, and we'll take that into account, that we need to be 10 feet off of that, and probably modify that easement. Okay. Okay, from there, can we move on to number six?
Go ahead.
The owner information should be added to the plan, tax map number, folio number, property address, that's over on the right, over above the owner's acknowledgement, I added a applicant name, address, tax ID number, parcel ID number, excuse me, and the book
been made now?
Yes.
Okay. I did see some engineering comments from, from their engineer, but I don't know that
and page, it's just above that owner acknowledgement there.
that's pertinent to us unless Alex had some comments to make regarding them. Okay, he doesn't, so, other than that, I, I think we're in a situation now where we have to look at a need to request a waiver, if there is, if, if there's going to be requests for a fee in lieu of, because of the quote-unquote "development land" or not developable land or whatever, because we're not doing anything right now.
The ordinance is written that the fact that it's just a subdivision that triggers the.
And therefore, the waiver. Waiver request would have to be made.
Just waiver request, right.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We, we needed official waiver requests for that.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments with respect to what we just heard? All right, so we have two things then, really, we have to work out the easement language, or what's included in the easement as far as maintenance and, and access, all right, and some kind of language for requests for a waiver that we can look at and make a decision. Michael, I'm going to ask you, do we need that now, or can we just let that, let them work on that language, understanding that they're going to be requesting one?
You can let them, they can work it out, obviously, there's not going to be any approval from the Board of Commissioners until that is, issues are worked out, so my suggestion would be, is to, you can give them a conditional approval based on the square and the way of those additional issues.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments with respect to that? All right, can we have some possibility of some public comments? All right, and as normal, Barbara, I have to go find the phone number.
Yeah, that was when I started the meeting, Barb.
All right, if you're into public, and you would like to call in and comment on the proposed subdivision plan, the call-in number is 571-748-4021, and then there's a PIN number, 499-176-997, pound sign, I'll repeat that. The dial-in number is 571-748-4021, and the PIN number is 499-176-997, pound sign. Give that a couple minutes.
Yeah, in the meantime, I've, I've got a, a great picture on my computer screen, it's just not, it's not picking up my audio, so I will strive for a better connection next time.
Well, I'm happy to hear we have a good picture. We have anything, Andrew?
No.
All right, not hearing anything from the public. We have essentially requests for a subdivision, partially within upper Chichester, partially in lower Chichester. With respect to the upper Chichester portion, we had potential requests for a waiver, which has, Charlie's going to have to go back and talk to his client about that with respect to formalizing a request, and we also have a, a maintenance and a access easement to be worked out, and have to have that language worked out. So those are the conditions, and with that, we have someone would like to vote on whether or not to conditionally approve this request at this point. Want to take a vote there, Barbara?
Sidney Charney? Joe Shaw? Chuck Lewis?
Yes, with the conditions.
Charles Fisher?
Yes, with the conditions.
Greg Trader?
Yes.
All right, Charlie, there you go.
That's great news, thanks. I'll get to work.
Thank you very much, Charles.
All right, we'll talk to you again. When's our next meeting?
There won't be a, a need to come back to the board at this time, you can work out the easement.[1690.72] All right, I think that's about enough time. We have anything, Andrew? All right, not hearing anything from the public. We have essentially requests for a subdivision, partially within Upper Chi Chester, partially in Lower Chi Chester. With respect to the Upper Chi Chester portion, we had potential requests for a waiver which has, Charlie's going to have to go back and talk to his client about that with respect to formalizing a request. Then we also have a maintenance and a access easement to be worked out and have to have that language worked out. So those are the conditions and with that, we have someone would like to vote on whether or not to conditionally approve this request at this point. Want to take a vote there, Barbara?
Cindy Charny? Joe Shaw? Chuck Lewis?
Yes, with the conditions.
Charles Fisher?
Yes, with the conditions.
Greg Kreider?
All right, Charlie, there you go.
That's great news, thanks. I'll get to work.
Thank you very much, Charles.
All right, we'll talk to you again. When's our next meeting?
There won't be a need to come back to the board at this time. You can work out the easement language and whatnot if you want with Alex, I suppose. Alex, you can work with him on that, right? And get that waiver language together, the request for a waiver, and we will set you up or you can petition to see the board of commissioners and get on their schedule.
All right.
In fact, if you have Barbara's number, just call her and she'll help you through the rest of the process.
Excellent, yes, Barbara's been a lot of help so far, thank you.
All right, thank you, Charles.
All right, I'll be signing off then, thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a review of two ordinances that are being proposed and we've been asked to look at those ordinances. One is effectively called the brewery ordinance and the other one is called the township line rezoning ordinance. We have a guest who will briefly explain both ordinances. And Brian wants to introduce yourself and...
Yes, good evening. Hi, everybody. For the record, my name is Brian Seidel, Upper Chi Chester Township planning. So here we're talking about the brewery ordinance. This is a brewery and restaurant ordinance. From my perspective, this is a fairly straightforward ordinance that we're looking at here. What it does is provide the definition and clarity to a few terms that are already addressed in the township zoning ordinance, specifically pertaining to restaurants and taverns. The other component of this ordinance is that it adds definitions and use regulations for brew pub, microbreweries, and taverns, which are not uses that are contemplated within the current zoning ordinance and are not clearly defined. So what this ordinance does is address those components. It also addresses where those uses are permitted. I will jump ahead to section, underneath section seven, there's a small table that identifies where these uses are permitted within the various zoning. It provides as a general summary to clarify those types of uses. There's really no change in terms of the restaurant and tavern uses where they are currently permitted within the current zoning ordinance and the current zoning regulation is where they continue to be permitted. The brewery, brew pub, and microbrewery and taverns provide the additional use regulations that identify those areas and where they are permitted within the township. We also provided, along with this, parking regulations to address parking standards for those uses. And otherwise, that's pretty much it. So I'm here to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, why don't we go around Cindy and just go around there?
Is it on? So what's actually prompting the change? Is it just to add the taverns, microbreweries? Or are there really significant differences from the existing ordinance?
The real difference is to identify these specific terms and provide use regulations for these terms. There is, first step of this is identifying, clarifying the definition of restaurant and different levels of restaurants. But associated with that, there is no clear definition or category, so to speak, for a microbrewery or a brewery or those types of uses. This is intended to accommodate the other types of uses that may be out there that may be contemplating and provide business opportunities within Upper Chi Chester Township, which does not currently exist within zoning regulations.
So it's primarily just the addition of these other uses?
Correct, yes. Not really changing the existing regulations or where uses are permitted, but just clarifying those definitions and adding the additional uses brewery, microbrewery, taverns.
Thank you.
Cindy asked my question and I have no further question.
I'm fine with the information as presented.
I'd like to thank you for the effort you put in in putting this together. I think Barbara, you may have been involved in putting this together as well. It looks pretty good. I think the clarification with respect to whether it's in a commercial district or industrial district or an IC district or whatnot will provide opportunities for developers to come in and say, hey, here's where we could be located with respect to our idea and see what kind of properties we had available within the township. So I think that's going to help them a lot and I think it's going to provide for some clarification for people who may be in residential areas worried about where certain things could be located. So I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance and, you know, that's my comments.
What is, is the activity supposed to be?
There are no specific projects that are proposed or in the works or no applications that are filed, so to speak. This is just what I'll say is a proactive ordinance, addressing the use that's not currently listed in the ordinance and provides opportunities for future development or future users to come into Upper Chi Chester Township. Barbara?
Brian, I think all I wanted to do was just take a quick scan of it and all those definitions. I was just trying to just see if I followed it. Not 100% sure if this is a conflict or not, but I guess what I saw in C1 district, that you have a fast food permitted by right. Fast food is by right without a drive through. And when you go to the summary page, it just has fast food is permitted use in C1. I don't know if that would be giving the operator the ability of saying, well, it says in the summary page that fast food is allowed with a drive through.
I think part of the thinking behind all that and doing it that way was to limit the ability to put in drive-through lanes and to have more jurisdiction over those requirements and how those were to be done. So I think it was a purposeful limiting of drive-through versus non-drive-through.
Well, I know that you wanted to do it without a drive-through, but I'm just saying on the summary page, you might want to make sure that on a conflict, you might say fast food without a drive-through.
You're suggesting adding some like...
That's right, yeah. Just avoid conflict because I guess the drive-through, a fast food could have either.
And you're, when you refer to the summary page, you're referring to the essentially table of the zoning designation and the user?
Yeah.
That's something we could look at.
Sure.
I don't think we're looking at changing definitions, just clarifications.
Okay.
I just want to tell you that Brian worked with Mike Pierce, Lisa and George and I, and I just want to make sure Mike and Lisa and George have got credit also because they are a big help.
Absolutely, I think it's well done and it's very, very comprehensive. Any other comments from anybody? All right, Brian, if you would, we'll move on to the township line ordinance.
With me, I just want to write a few notes down here.
Before we get started there, for reference purposes, some of this may look familiar because we visited a similar project that was presented something once ago with respect to CCRC, prop zoning and potential for modifying that for an applicant. And since that period of time, the township's looked at that request and has studied it a little bit further to come up with what I think is a pretty unique presentation of accommodating that applicant and also making some other things available for others that might want to develop within the township. So with that, Brian.
All right, that's a great introduction, thank you for that. So what we're talking about now is what we're referring to as the township line partial district. This is a designation of the area basically between township line road, I-95, Market Street, and the township boundaries in the east. If we look at this from a zoning perspective on the zoning map, it's really a broken series of zoning designations. There's five different zoning designations in this area, ranging between the R10 residential district, industrial, C1 commercial, mobile homes, continuing to care retirement community. So it's a lot of different uses within this area. What we've tried to accommodate with this new ordinance is to create unity in the area. The key of this is really to create unity and harmony for a variety of uses. While there's not a significant amount of existing residential in Upper Chi Chester Township, there is significant residential areas along the adjacent township of Trade Village and Lower Chi Chester Township. While this area is primarily commercial and industrial in Upper Chi, we want to be respectful of surrounding residential uses and residential areas as well. The intent is also to provide a, I mentioned, consistency of a variety of uses in this area. We've really looked at the industrial uses, commercial districts, uses that are permitted in this, or commercial district, and also in the IC industrial, commercial district for what uses to be compatible and supporting uses. The unique aspect of this ordinance is really that we are doing more with zoning than just identifying uses, lot area regulations. What we are zoning for is providing regulations for a look and appearance that we want to see in this corridor. And basically, based on these standards, the idea is that we can have a nice commercial corridor along township line road and accommodate a lot of these uses.
Your mic is cut out, I can't hear you.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so we, all right, lost my train of thought there. So we're providing for a variety of uses and providing zoning within this corridor. Really, the template that we use for this is Delaware County's model ordinance pertaining to what they refer to as the activity corridors. Upper Chi Chester Township is also working on a redevelopment plan with their Boothland Town Center and the project team for that is also using the same activity corridor component. With that plan, I anticipate they will be implementing more of an idea of buildings closer to the street, a more walkable street front area. We've adapted that to be a little bit more what I'd call suburban here. We're still allowing for parking in the front yards, however, we are requiring a green buffer between the street and the parking areas to provide for pedestrian corridors, streetwalks. We're providing regulations and design standards pertaining to lighting, street lighting, pedestrian lighting, standards pertaining to site furnishings, colors, standards pertaining to building, building design, building materials. So we're really zoning for a look of the area. In general, the idea is that the more vehicular oriented type of uses, what I refer to as offices, retail, restaurants, would be located closer to township line road, but it would also allow for larger industrial type of uses that could be at the rear of the designation adjacent to I-95. So more of the trucking, manufacturing type of uses that could be louder or potentially more invasive in nature would be located adjacent to I-95 and further away from those residential areas and further away from the commercial corridor of township line road. Without going through all of the use regulations and standards, I just want to provide a general overview and I'm happy to hear any comments at the planning commission or questions at the planning commission they have received.
I don't have any comments right now.
All right, I guess looking at what's proposed here, it sounds like we're coming into the new century of styling of developing and whatnot and looking forward to making the township sort of like cohesive type presence where you drive down a particular area and say, oh, here's where all the restaurants are, or here's where, here's where my new doctor's office is located or something like that. And that they would all kind of mesh in style-wise and whatnot along township line road. That's essentially what the front of this is going to look like.
That's correct.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
You know, the right kind of businesses coming in.
The supporting type of businesses and supporting uses that can be in the same general area.
Right. And then we're talking in the back of this particular property where you might have some warehousing, a truck terminal or something of that nature where they would have trucks entering off of township line road through some designated access point to be able to get to the back of the properties and all the loading docks or service type vehicles would approach from the back of the building so that from township line road, you wouldn't see all that activity going on, but it would be limited to 95 side of the view.
That is correct. Regarding the parking standards, we're not eliminating the need for parking in this situation, however, we are indicating a limitation of parking between the building and township line road and encouraging the parking vehicle located to the side of the building or in the case of a trucking or warehouse type of building, that that loading would be at the rear of the building and adjacent to I-95. So again, screen the potential noise, lighting and activity from the roadway and from the residential area.
Okay. That's it for me. Greg?
Greg, I can't hear you.
Is your, is your mic on, Mike? There's a little green button on the front, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. So as I was saying, I live in an area where we are impacted by noise from CSX, their operations, and that's 24/7. So my concern is you have, it's a mix of residential, commercial. So my concern is that you put barriers up, at least that you pay attention to that kind of thing. And I guess the other concern I have is, I read in there that there's allowances for recreation and I assume there might be walking and bike paths and that kind of thing. So that's something I'd like to see be part of this.
Okay, if I can, the first, just to address the first comment that you made regarding the uses. I indicated this is intended to be compatible with the basic residential uses, but just to clear, the ordinance that's proposed is not encouraging or permitting any new residential uses other than continuing to care retirement communities, which is already permitted in this area. So I just wanted to clarify and assist in the system of proposing and location for new residential uses.
Brian, you've got to hold that microphone closer to you, we really can't hear you.
Try again. So just to, just to clarify the comment, the ordinance... Does microphone not work?
It works, it's working fine, just have to hold it close to your mouth.
So my comment was just simply to clarify that there are no residential uses that are proposed within these districts. proposed within these districts. It's intended to provide for commercial and industrial uses that are compatible with the adjacent residential uses. And I do hear your comment regarding the need for or desire for recreational uses. This is intended, as I indicated previously or originally, to the basis of an activity corridor for the provision of sidewalks adjacent to the roadways and with internal roadways and circulation as well. So in the event this is developed as a master plan, so to speak, there are provisions to accommodate that walkability in the area.
Alex? No comments? Okay. Why don't we open this up for general comments from the public, if you will? Let me give you those numbers again in case there's anybody out there would like to ask some questions about this. The telephone call-in number is 571-748-4021. Let me repeat that. And the PIN number is 499-176-997Pound. I'll repeat it one more time. Call-in number is 571-748-4021. And the PIN number is 499-176-997Pound. Start it up. Go ahead. Well, you can ask that while we're waiting for calls to come in.
Actually, I do have some questions. Something to do with the residential area, the R2 and the MH. Are there currently people living in those areas, private residences?
The R2 residential zoning district that's there is a cemetery. So there are people residing there, but...
That's kind of what I thought.
Correct. And the mobile home district that's there is currently existing. Again, it is not developed. The idea behind this in basically addressing or changing the zoning of the area adjacent to township line road would be to, again, provide an opportunity for a cohesive development. If the areas were developed on either side of this mobile home district, this would provide an opportunity for an internal roadway, which would not otherwise be possible if that zoning would change. So the idea is not really to reduce or eliminate the amount of mobile homes, property of zones by mobile homes, but more to provide circulation internally that could be provided and could accommodate all parcels more suitably.
Cindy, mobile home, we have to have a mobile home district. And regarding the location of the commercial versus the industrial uses, how would that be controlled to ensure that either the commercial's closer to the street, the industrial's further back? How would we make sure that anybody who applied to build those uses would keep the land between two of them?
I can't hear you, Ms. Torni.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. So my question had to do with the location of the commercial versus the industrial uses, and how we would control that when someone acquired the property.
So there's two, I guess, two aspects to answer that question. The first aspect is how the uses are permitted. So we have identified uses that are permitted by right, which are clearly permitted by the ordinance, and then there were other uses that are permitted by conditional use. Conditional use would require another level of approval by the commissioners and a review by the planning commission as well. Along with that, the design standards that I referenced pertaining to buffering, screening, street design, pedestrian design, loading areas, those are all, they're basically built into this ordinance. So as part of the conditional use process for those type of uses, they would be required to comply with those additional design standards. And it's another level to ensure that those uses are designed appropriately. The other aspect would be, for example, the uses of by right uses, retail stores, food stores, eating or drinking establishments, those type of uses are permitted by right. And those are practically the type of uses that you're going to see adjacent to roadways. Business like that needs to have viewers. They need to have pedestrians and vehicles driving by, see them, to serve as them. Being set back far off the roadway, adjacent to I-95, within an industrial development is not going to serve their needs. So we're encouraging those, by the ordinance regulations, we're encouraging those type of uses closer to the street.
Hey, do we have anything at all coming in from the outside, Andrew? All right, well... You can try it and see. All right, I can't see the number from here, so...
Person on 954-599-3059, if you're online and you'd like to ask a question, please unmute yourself by star six.
Okay, we're good. Brian, thank you very much. Any, no other questions? Very nice, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have new business next month. We should see Duncan coming back, returning in May. We anticipate that to happen. And next order of business would be a heart and soul report. And we're going to ask Joe Shaw to give that report.
All right. Everyone hear me? All right, everyone got a typed rundown of this? I'm just going to basically give a summary. And so for the summary, over nine months, 25 different events, and 1,000 data points. And volunteers have collected, you know, a lot of data. The team condensed the raw data into summary value statements, sub-themed, and then a few action items. The heart and soul team has spent time filtering, combing, condensing, clarifying, hundreds of action items, action ideas for each value statement. And the goal of each virtual meeting is to make choices and prioritize those value statements. Then each of the values, then each value will have a committee to organize the data, prioritize the common ideas, concerns, and then go to stakeholders and officials one more time before the work is complete on the final product. An action plan with recommended priorities, partnerships, suggest timelines and funding sources. And yes, so if anybody wants to join the committee and take a look at the condensed version of all the material, add any other action items, prioritize the action items in a follow-up meeting. And then everyone has the meetings on their copies. We're getting in touch with Barb.
It is now.
We heard you.
So anyway, the activities that have gone so far seem to have been, let's compile some data, let's make some recommendations, let's come up with some ideas. Now's the time when the ideas are coming out to be shared with the community. And they're going to be looking actively, proactively, for the involvement of the community to listen to these potential suggestions, and have the community basically help us limit the suggestions to the critical few that might be actionable now. All right? And determine some timeline for the other ones, if you will. So we're going to be actively, meaning we're not the planning commission, but the heart and soul, is going to be actively contacting the community through our newsletter and through other means to go out and get volunteers, to help look at these suggestions and help work us through the action items that we're proposing, and identify those critical few. And Barbara, I think we're going to be doing some things on local Chi TV coming down the road here. You want to talk a little bit about that? Because you might know a little bit more about it than I do.
We have Andrew's here, and he and Brian are helping with the, or actually coordinating the Chi TV. And Andrew has asked heart and soul to come up with a video. And Steve, driver, and a few others are going to help with creating that video to outline the seven values, but also to continue providing information to the Chi channel, so we'll be continuing to update the, everything, all the stakeholders in the activities and the action items in our plan on ongoing basis.
All right, any other business? Anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss tonight? Anything that's come up? Anything with your training or potential training requests that you might want? I don't know what you're waving at me, Barbara.
Everyone received information on the planning application and land development package in the emails, in your previous emails with your information. So hopefully, you can give me some of your comments and try and revise it. One of the things that Charlie Fisher and myself looked at is having two different, two different, and I think we talked about it last year, two different applications. We were talking about the new planning application, and remember that? Yeah, a year ago. And actually, almost two years ago. And the more detailed application is for major subdivisions and land development, and the simple application, which is our existing one, can be for the simple subdivision. There is much work, because the land development and the major subdivision application, the proposed one, really does have a lot of really good information that will help the planning commission and the board of commissioners actually help start the process and help the developer and the township get clear before they come to the commission.
Right, so basically, we're looking at the whole process from the time a developer has an idea, submits a sketch plan, or comes in with a plan, who they need to contact, when they need to contact, what type of information they need, and what the timeframes might be. And we want to standardize that as much as possible and make it clear to the public and to developers and whatnot who are coming in so that they can, you know, work through this as seamlessly as possible. And, you know, we should have an answer for almost any question that they come forward with, and hopefully, we're going to cover it all.
I got a comment from Brian, with Lisa already out. Mike, you got it too. I'm not sure if you, I don't know if you had time to read, but you're so busy with all the other ordinances that you're dealing with.
Yeah, I looked at it briefly, but I have not, I didn't see anything major that you added or changed.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And so that's, you know, we're trying really hard to make it a holistic approach to get that done. It's really good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me about that, Barbara. All right. If there are no other business, can I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? It's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Good seeing you.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Anytime.